This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, April the 7th. Please stand for our invocation led by Dr. Richard Benjamin at Ebenezer Baptist Church. And remain standing for the pledge and a moment of silence following the pledge.
Our Father, now God. We come to you this morning with bowed heads and humble hearts. And Lord, we thank you for this day and we thank you for this opportunity to serve. We thank you for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room. We realize, dear God, that only you truly know what is to be accomplished here today, because only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning. And as the events of the day continue to unfold, Lord, we seek your clarity and we seek your peace. We know you're with us, we know you are for us. And as we gather together to seek your counsel, lead our surrendered hearts to the path of your desired outcome. Thankfully, Lord, we are not expected to be perfect, for we are told in your word that we all fall short. So grant us peace in knowing that we are pursuing your purpose, not only for our lives, but all the lives of the citizens in Mobile, Alabama as well. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now going to have a moment of silence for all the COVID-19 victims that is deceased and their families that's here locally, statewide, nationally, and also worldwide. Following me will be Mr. Richardson and Mr. Williams.
I also would like for us to take, have a moment of solemn prayer for Mrs. May Baddach. She was a matriarch of Trinity Guards, may have been among the oldest in our city. She was 104 years old. She passed away on the 27th. She had, she still maintained the faculties of her mind. She was very alert. She married to the late Joseph Dodge, the person we named the Dodge Community Center after who himself was a renowned businessman and community leader. Her home going was Saturday, April the 4th, and we would like to consider her also for a solemn prayer.
Also today, it's with heavy heart that we learn about a tragedy on Sunday in Sims. The sister and nephew of Jack Tillman, Ms. Bonnie Brightwell, and her son Kyle were a victim of a house fire and lost their lives. And it is with that announcement that we send our condolences to Jack and his sister Eleanor as they deal with this tragedy. Thank you for your prayers.
Let's bow our heads.
Roll call, President Manzi.
Yeah.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
But this is the Easter season, and even though, you know, we are facing some bad times, but we're not as bad as many places, you know, throughout the world, especially here in the United States. So we have a lot of things to be grateful for, and we are blessed here, right here in Mobile, Alabama. What a beautiful day it is outside, and can't wait to take some advantage of it later on today. At this time, we ask that everyone to turn off all of their electronic devices before or upon entering the meeting. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Each person is allowed five minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the sound of four minutes, one minute remaining to summarize. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. I would like to first provide a quick update on our meeting. Today, we are currently, we did have our pre-conference, and we are now having our regular council meeting. On next week, we're looking to go virtual through Zoom. With that being said, following the executive order from the Governor, Ivy, council members are now able to meet remotely and still vote on items associated to the COVID-19 and its central city services. Two of our colleagues will join us remotely on this morning. Also, based on the guidelines handed down by the Alabama Department of Public Health, a limited number of people will be allowed entry in. Person presentation pensions and other communications have been suspended for 30 days. Any interest parties are able to follow the live streams of the meeting available at The public can also email public comments, which will be acknowledged as received during the meeting, distributed to the council members, and included in the meeting minutes. Citizens email such comments to City Clerk at cityofmobile.org up to 30 minutes prior to the meeting. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Madam City Clerk.
Approval of minutes of March 31st.
So moved. Second.
Been properly moved in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Passes.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
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 Last Friday, as you know, we signed the stay-at-home order, which will be effective up until April 30th. Today, the city council will, has on its agenda an ordinance, which the bottom line is, it will allow our police department to issue tickets to those who violate the curfew. So if you're out after 10 o'clock at night, you can expect to be stopped. And if you don't have proof of why you're out, you can expect to get a ticket. And so they will discuss that later on in their agenda. I think you also know that the Lads Stadium site is up and running as of yesterday. That, along with the two diagnostic and medical centers, we now have three, I'm going to call them off-site locations, where citizens are being tested. And when I look back on what was going on prior to that, we've had limited testing going on by our hospitals for probably three weeks. When I say limited testing, it was, if you were sick, if you were very sick, and they were suspicious that you were Corona positive, they would give you what's called the PCR test. That's the nasal swab. So there's a perception, we've had no testing going on in the community for three weeks, but we have. But you should see it starting to escalate from this point on. I'd also remind you that I believe that the city of Mobile was among the very first to receive the rapid serum test. That is the antibody test that you've heard so much of. You prick your finger, take the blood sample, and they can determine if you have antibodies present, which means that your body has started developing immunity. It was so new, there was really no protocol developed on how to use the test. And so the protocol actually, I think that the hospitals and doctors in the city of Mobile, along with Director Ball, were determined how to best, how to best use that. So as a part of an offshoot to that, and there are two offshoots. One is, is that we have tested 900 of the city of Mobile's first responders. 900. Of the 900, only 37 of them were tested positive for the antibodies, and then their body was developing an immunity, or had developed an immunity. Of those, there were only a couple who were symptomatic, had any symptoms that something may be amiss. So as we did that, 900, there were 37 who tested positive. Of those 37, only three, upon taking the PCR test, the nasal swab, were determined to have an active coronavirus. The arithmetic on that is, only 4% of our first responders had the antibodies present, indicating they had developed, or they had developed an immunity, or in the process of possibly developing immunity to the virus. If you think about, only three out of 900 actually had the virus when they took the nasal tests. That is .3%. That is 3 tenths of 1% of 900 individuals that we tested, which is probably the closest thing to what we're looking at in our community. And it's not going out in the street and randomly testing people, but you would have to assume that our policemen and firemen are representative, pretty representative of our community. Matter of fact, you could say that they probably come in contact with more people than others in the community. The second offshoot to the rapid serum test is that because they've become recognized as being a tool, in the toolbox of determining what, where the infection is, the prices tremendously escalated. Yesterday, we were chasing down an offer to buy these kits for $75. A kit, per, 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 per kit. When we got them originally, it was $15. The Synergy Labs, Brad Pitts purchased 5,000 and gave them to the city of Mobile for our first responders, and he gave some to the hospitals for their health officials. He didn't charge a dime for those. Last night, we got a call from Brad Pitts at Synergy, said he has located almost the identical test kit, which we were pricing at $75 yesterday, which really makes it almost cost prohibitive, but he found kits for $14. So today, as we're speaking, we're issuing a purchase order for 6,000 kits at $4 to be determined how they're, and it will be determined in conjunction with Brad, you know, how they will be best be used. To me, that's all real good news, because there are a lot of people that have some degree of exposure that we would like to test, and we'll work out how they will, how that will actually be done. Meantime, I would just remind everybody, based on the things that we know, some of the things have not changed. And that is, is you're, if you will stay at home, if you will stay at home, I say it one more time, if you will stay at home, you're probably not going to be exposed to the virus. And so limit your interaction with all individuals. I know that, I think that the city council realizes this may be our last face-to-face meeting, which is an effort to make sure that we do limit the number of people that we come in contact with you. I believe that across the nation, there are so many positive things happening with the identification of medicines that can be used to fight the virus, with the ventilation, ventilators that are being developed, ventilators that are being now shipped from the West Coast to the East Coast, because they're not in use. And I am very, very hopeful that as we get through the next week or 10 days in the city of Mobile, that we will have reached our peak, and that we will start determining how do we go back and resume a sense of normalcy in our day-to-day activities. We're not there yet, but we need to start thinking about how we'll do that. So thank everybody for what you're doing. Hope each other have a blessed Easter. I know that there are a lot of people concerned that they can't go to church on Easter, but thanks to Governor Ivy, there is a way for you to attend Easter services in your car. I'm aware of one congregation whose pastor's going to probably be up in there in a bucket truck, speaking to his congregation, who'll all be parked in cars. Just because we can't be in church on Easter does not mean that we can't pray. And I really believe that this may be one of those Easters, when even though we're not in church, there may be more praying going on this Easter, and there's no reason for it not to be than any Easter in our life. So please keep that in mind. God bless each and every one of you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Gregory.
Mayor, that's really great news about those test kits. And you mentioned you were going to go ahead and put together a purchase order, is that correct?
That is correct.
And how quickly do you think we can have those test kits, then, back on the street for people to, to use?
I do not know the answer to that. After this, we'll be in touch with Brad Pitts at Synergy, and we'll have a better indication.
Well, that's really great news. And what you have done with Brad, and just in general, in trying to get these test kits, you know, to the citizens of Mobile and to our first responders, of course, as well, but it's just really been terrific. Mayor, you've done a great job. Just want to commend you and the entire staff for, for what you've done.
Mighty kind of you say that, Ms. Gregory, but the real hero in this is Brad Pitts. I mean, without any prompting, he is the person that got the rapid serum kits. He's the one that invested in the equipment needed to do the nasal test. He's the one that's built the kits here. And people say, why were we behind Birmingham when this thing started? And it's because they had a lab in Birmingham that had the nasal swabs just as a matter of business. We did not have a lab in Mobile that had that. We do have that lab today, and my hope is, is that our local health providers, our hospitals and all, will support Synergy Labs as one of our own, who really stepped up and has made a difference in our community.
Yeah, I mean, it really is a great example of showing how a local business, a lab like this, can step up and make such a difference. So we really appreciate what they've done.
I think it will be more fitting, when we get back to meeting, that we probably can just do a proclamation along with the mayor, and invite him down and present it to him and everything.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk.
Adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Vice President.
Yes, sir.
I would like to move that the items on our agenda under essential COVID-19 resolutions, which are Resolution 08265 through 39011, be deemed essential or COVID-19 related.
Second.
Been properly moved in second in the discussions. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed?
Opposed.
And then I would move for the adoption of the agenda.
What about the voters that failed here locally? What do we got these guys up here? They get to vote on that.
Mr. Manzi and Ms. Rich, are you all voting to move forward with the COVID-19 resolution, essential resolutions?
Yes. I, I.
Ms. Rich?
Aye.
Sister one.
Let me continue with the approval.
I move to the adoption of the agenda.
Second.
The whole agenda this time.
Yep, right.
Correct. Been properly moved in, you said the whole?
Now we're voting on the whole agenda.
Okay, then. Okay.
Now I make the motion to, to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Properly moved in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 In opposed? Passes.
Essential COVID-19 resolutions, 08265, approved purchase order to ITS Plus Inc. for video imaging vehicle detection systems.
So move.
Second.
If you don't, I'm going to take, I'll take all of these together.
Through 01273, which are the ones that appeared last week. The other, the other ones will, the other ones will have to hold over.
No.
No.
No holdovers.
No holdovers.
It's all worked out. We're going to vote on every item.
Do we have to have a motion to waive the rule on the ones that weren't on there last week?
Yes.
No, I was going to take all of the essential COVID resolutions together.
No, but we have, there are some of the essential COVID resolutions that weren't on last week that we need to waive the rule for.
None of these were on last week.
Yeah, no, last, at the previous meeting.
They were.
Oh, they were in a different category. Okay, I got you.
Go ahead, Joe.
Let's make one motion that will approve all items that did not appear on the agenda last week.
Move to waive the rule on all items that did not appear on the agenda last week.
Second.
Been properly moved in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 In opposed? Passes.
08265, approved purchase order to ITS Plus for video imaging vehicle detection systems. 08266, approved purchase order to Bagman Russell for LED luminaries, mounting arms, and bucket truck service. 08269, approved purchase order to Toder LLC for trash containers, lids, and hinges. 21270, authorized contract with Southern Earth Sciences for laboratory testing for Hickory Street Landfield Professional Services. 21271, authorized service contract with All Florida Mechanical Services Inc. for HVAC maintenance and repairs for various city-owned buildings. 01273, authorized agreement with PFM Financial Advisors for financial advisory services. 08276, approved purchase order to Best Buy Stores for 11 laptop computers. 08277, approved purchase order to Best Buy Stores for 10 laptop computers. 08278, approved purchase order to OnSol Immediate Holding Company for code red public notification software. 08279, transfer monies from Priority Project District 3 Capital to Parkway Senior Center Improvements. 39011, ordinance to enforce stay-at-home order and public safety curfew for the city of Mobile during the COVID-19 public health emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved in second in the discussion.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dave.
On 39011, I'm assuming that the version we are approving is the 100-200 version.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
In other discussions?
Yes, I was wondering, I was wondering, would, would we consider the, at the, for the first offense to be a warning instead of a fine for the first offense?
What, a warning?
That's always an option to the police, but no, that's not a good thing to put in ordinance.
Yeah, I, I think we ought to just leave it as it is. Police have leeway when they're writing speeding tickets, so I think it would be considered kind of the same.
That's discretionary for the police.
Aye.
In other discussions, I would like to talk about two items. Zero, talk about the 09-279, which is the priority, project for District 3 Capital to the Parkway Senior Center. This is money that's moving out of my discretionary funds to go towards the senior center on DIP. This money is to pretty much go towards the additional rooms for the exercise equipment, and I'm looking for that to really kick off very soon. Again, we had moved some money last week, we're moving some money again this week. And again, I'd like to thank the administration and Ms. Smith for helping this project to move along. And the seniors down there have been wanting this for many years, and now they'd probably be able to have a exercise room towards the beginning of fall of this year. And again, I'd do like to thank the administration, also Ms. Smith. And also with 39-011, I am really supporting this. And we had a discussion this morning, talking about, you know, early curfew for the juveniles. Since we've been in meeting, one of the local news stations had said that a 17-year-old had got shot in the leg on last evening. And that's something that I'm glad that the state, public director is going to look at, maybe, you know, doing like an early time for the juveniles, because again, we know that, you know, out of mind bring a devil workshop. And last evening around about 8:30, there was a lot of out-of-minds, minds, excuse me, wandering our streets. And we need to get them to jump, jump ahead of, of that. So looking, you know, towards something in the future, maybe try to approve maybe an earlier time for the juveniles. In other discussions. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me.
Ms. Rich?
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Can you hear?
Go ahead.
Can, and it's, I really do apologize for any repetition this will create, because I could not hear your pre-conference discussion on this. And if I could hear from our attorney on exactly what the original ordinance reads, and any fines, or however the city would enforce, I just need greater understanding of this before I vote. And if the council has come up with something, like I said, I, I could not hear, so I would really like to be part of that before I weigh in on a vote on the record.
We've gone from...
On the, the curfew ordinance?
Yes.
The original had a $50 minimum and a $100 maximum fine for the ticket.
$50 for the first offense, $100 for the second.
Right, excuse me, yes, sir. $50 first offense, $100 second offense. That was, that's pretty much the only change from the pre-council meeting last night, or yesterday afternoon.
Excuse me, is our attorney speaking? Because I can't hear. Can he move closer to, to the clerk? Well, move the microphone that the clerk is using, or the infrastructure? Because I can't hear. I know you're separated, and I want you to keep separated, but, but I can't hear the explanation.
Beth.
And I understand that the administration was going to put some changes forward. We're supposed to get copies of that. Perhaps you're holding it.
Beth, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, the only change that was, that was made in pre-council between what Chris sent us yesterday, is that in what Chris sent us yesterday, the initial fine was $50.
Whoever's speaking now, we can't hear what you're saying.
Okay. There was more changes yesterday, I think that's what she's asking about. Can you hear me?
Let's do this, let's call her. And then you... Go ahead.
Okay.
The initial, can you hear me, Ms. Rich?
Yes, thank you.
The initial version that came out yesterday, the two major things that we changed, or that I asked Ms. Kessler to change, and she did so, was that number one, it kind of, it was referring to the stay-at-home order issued by the state health officer on April 3rd, and then after that, it initially said, "or as may be hereafter amended." That last sentence was taken out, so you didn't have a moving target on what...
I see, okay.
I see, okay.
And then the second thing was, we were trying to figure out what, how to have an end date, and we bounced a few ideas around, and ultimately, it came down to tying it into the end date of the executive order from the governor declaring a statewide health emergency.
Okay, so it was moving everything to the same look, okay, I get that. What was the fine that would be levied for someone who did not comply?
Initially, it was going to be $50 first offense, $100 second offense.
Okay, and has there been discussion with the council to alter that?
Yes, the current amount on the table is $100 first offense, $200 second offense.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
In other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Beth.
Say it again, Beth, please.
Aye.
Aye.
In opposed? Passes.
Appeals, we have requests of Terry Martin, Moffett Road Baptist Church, 5555 Moffett Road, for a waiver of the noise ordinance on April 11th and 12th, from 8:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m.
So moved. Second.
Been properly moved in second in the discussions. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Passes.
Public hearings, today is a public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Dequilla Smith, doing business merry-go-round transportation to operate a shuttle service.
This is the public hearing, anyone here to speak on this public hearing?
This is the public hearing, is anyone here to speak on this public hearing? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Um, we received, um, three items this week, uh, one from Laura Gafford, and I think you all, well, you all have copies, we made copies up there, and she is, um, on Candlelight Court in Mobile, Alabama, 36695, and, uh, she is asking for a moratorium on small cells and other wireless infrastructure permits, processes, and deployment until the COVID-19 emergency is over. We also received notification from C. Thomas Wright, Executive Director of Missions from Mobile Baptist Association on Azalea Road, and this is with regard to the Texas Place, um, rezoning. And we received, uh, notification, we, uh, correspondence from Reggie Hill on Center Street, and, um, he has various items that he is addressing on here, and, uh, he is also addressing last week's meeting where he was asked to, uh, when we were setting up, he was asked to leave the auditorium until our setup was complete and our numbers were counted with essential employees that were necessary for the pre-council meeting, so that's why he was asked to step out until those numbers were, um, determined as to whether or not, uh, he could return, being that we had 25 individuals here for essential business, uh, he could not return into the meeting, and that's why he was not allowed back in the room. Uh, he was not just put out, um, haphazardly. And, uh, with regard to the meeting, uh, not, uh, being shown live streamed, the meeting, there was a technical difficulty with, um, our production company with, um, putting the meeting on live stream on YouTube, but it was, um, uh, streamed on Facebook.
Um, Mr. Chairman? Everybody is in, um, in possession of the letter from, from Mr. Hill. Um, we're going to work through a lot of things, uh, just like we're going to work on what's essential and what's not essential in our agenda, uh, who's, uh, essential and who's not essential, it should be determined by the mayor and his presence required by law, um, to be here, and what he needs to, uh, to do that effectively, and who we want to hear from, uh, so that may be something that we, that we talk about, even though we're meeting remotely next time. But I told Mr. Hill that I would at least call your attention to the letter and read his last six questions. And, uh, it is kind of different not having Ms. Irene and, and Reggie here, uh, adds a different flavor to the whole, um, ceremony, so to speak, but it says, "My initial questions for the week are, should there be no more than 25 or no more than 10 individuals in attendance at any gathering in the state of Alabama?" And I think we know that that is 10 is the guidance and 25 for working. How many 5G towers have been or are en route to be erected in Mobile, Alabama? Where are these towers located or intended to be located? That's number three. Number four, when was the contract approved to allow such towers to be erected in the City of Mobile? Number five, would such a contract need to be presented before the city prior to implementation? And number six, what specifics, that's not what that says, what specificities determine the agenda items listed under essential COVID-19 resolutions? I'd like to read that last one one more time. What specifics determine the agenda items listed under essential COVID-19 resolutions? He thanks us all for our time, he offers his prayers, and he looks forward to future communications.
In other council members? Not, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance is held over six, oh, um, I'm sorry, under, uh, presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, we do have present individuals that, uh, would like to address the council regarding, um, the, the next ordinance, which is the rezoning located at 605 Texas Place.
You can call them down. You have the names?
They can introduce themselves when they come up here, we just didn't...
The ones who's, who's come down and talked about Texas Place, you may come down at this time?
I think they're going to waive. They're going to waive their...
Okay. Can you just give us your name and your address?
Mac Morris, 7432 Mallard...
Speak a little bit more than the mic, can you? Thank you.
Mac Morris, 7432 Mallard Drive, Mobile. Is the petitioner here? I didn't know if she was going to address the group.
No, sir.
All right, just to clarify for all, uh, as a representative of the Mobile Baptist Association, uh, we had originally, uh, hoped that, uh, this petition could be withdrawn, and we had, uh, hopefully, we thought we had successfully negotiated with the person offering to purchase the property for her to withdraw it, since she was the one who legally made that. When we got here today, we found out that she has not, so it is our desire that it be withdrawn, but it's our understanding that we can't do that, and, uh, she informed us that she wished for it to go forward, so we're just here to listen, and it's our desire that that be withdrawn, if possible. Thank you.
Is anyone else present? Not, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance is held over 64004, rezoned property located at 605 Texas Place from R1 to B2.
So moved, second?
Been properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor? And opposed?
No.
Vote down. Denied.
Ordinance is denied.
Um, yes, Mr. President?
Can, can, can they hear me?
Yes.
What, what was the, what was the vote on that last item?
It failed.
It was denied unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
It failed to achieve the vote.
64010, rezoned property located at 256 and 260 St. Louis Street and 257 St. Anthony Street from T. 5.1 and T. 4 to T. 5.1 for proposed Lot 1 and T. 4 for proposed Lot 2.
So moved. Second?
Been properly moved and second in the discussions.
Can I hear from, can I hear from, uh, Councilman Manzi on this one?
Mr. Manzi, do you have any comment regarding this rezoning on St. Louis and St. Anthony Streets?
Uh, no, ma'am.
It has its full support.
In other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, passes.
Passes unanimously. Resolutions held over 08267, approved purchase order to GM, GMGC LLC for two Chevrolet Equinox SUVs. 08268, approved purchase order to CDW Government LLC for laptop computers and docking stations for the Gulf Quest Maritime Museum. 21272, authorized contract with Sanders Highland Corporation for Harold L. Johnson Police Headquarters Planning and Public Information Flooring Replacement and Painting. 37274, approval certificate of public convenience and necessity for a taxicab service to Charles Allen Copeland, doing business as Got a Cab.
So moved. Second?
Been properly moved and second in the discussions. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Passes.
Ordinance is being introduced, 34011, ordinance to levy taxes for tax year begin, beginning October 1, 2020, on all real and personal property in tangibles located within the corporate city, corporate limits of the City of Mobile.
Mr. Vice President, I move that we waive council rules and, uh, uh, take this up.
Mr. Daze, we did the, we, we suspended the rules for the entire agenda.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I thought we just did it for the essential items, I'm sorry.
No, we did it for the entire agenda.
Okay.
So we need to...
So moved.
Second?
Been properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, passes.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 37280, recommend approvals at ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer, table wine, on-off premises license for Kate...
Where's the ordinance? Did we, I missed it. The ordinance being introduced on the tax...
We moved it under COVID. We moved it under COVID.
Oh, did it?
Oh, for the taxes?
Not the tax? Yes, 34011, did we vote on that?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I thought Mr. Daze started to say he was going to move for immediate consideration. But then did he come back and make the motion?
Yes, uh-huh.
And we voted?
Yeah.
That was pretty quick. Okay, I thought we were still in discussion, all right.
Oh, no. Okay, 37281, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Yummy Crab Seafood Restaurant on Mont Lamar Drive. 37282, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Gwen's House on Government Boulevard. 58283, add tailor-made lawn care to the list of private contractors to abate properties declared public nuisances. 6284, determine appropriation to Delta Resource Educational Association of Mobile, serves a public purpose and approved payment. 23280, authorize a right-of-way deed for permanent easement with Illinois Central Railroad Company.
So moved. Second?
Been properly moved and second in the discussion. I would like to just put this thought in the council member's head, um, and I know that the ABC approv, approval is probably is not essential, not knowing that how long we going to be out, you know, from having a quorum meeting together, but really just don't want to put businesses, you know, batlaw them either, hinder their business in the future, so that's something that we really need to think about in the future, um, and, you know, in that nature. In other discussions?
I see, but I asked the attorney.
Oh, yeah, you want to talk about it? Because you want to hinder no businesses, trying to be pro-business.
Yeah, I, whatever we determine to be essential, but we just need to discuss that openly and have, and be consistent, that's all. But, Chris, you're welcome to say something, but I was...
You don't have to.
I was just...
But just, we need to, really need to think about that in the, in the future. Okay, in other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Passes.
CIP resolutions being introduced, 21285, authorized contract with TAG for Tremere Park concessions and restroom renovations. 01286, authorize a cooperative maintenance agreement with USA Health University Hospital for beautification of Mobile Street.
So moved. Second?
Been properly moved and second in the discussions. I would like to talk about the CIP Resolution 21-285. Uh, this is a resolution that's before us to authorize a contract, um, with TAG and Architect Group, um, for, um, Tremere Park for the concession and restroom renovations, uh, which is badly, badly needed out there at Tremere. Uh, just not happened overnight, when I first took counsel, uh, the restrooms out there were just deplore, and also the concession stands. I am so happy to see this before us, but we can go ahead and start planning to, um, create, uh, new restroom and concession stands out there at Tremere Park, because Tremere Park is one of our biggest parks in our city, and we really need to bring it up to park. And again, this is coming out of CIP, the extra one cent sales tax. Any discussions, any more discussions?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Uh, on 01286, this is a joint project between USA and, um, in my office. Uh, we started out, uh, when I took over as council member, Mobile Street had holes and hollows and ditches from Springfield Avenue northward to USA, and, um, we applied for money from the state and received it. Uh, USA joined us, and, uh, Mobile Street has been completely revitalized, but we had to come back with a beautification component. We finished the east side of Mobile Street, we put lamps up, uh, signs, plants, uh, it's just beautiful, but on the east side, we were, we didn't have enough money, uh, to put the lights, signs, and trees up over there, so this, uh, $30,000 will complete that project. When, when they finish with this, the east side, uh, will pretty much look like, the west side, I mean, will pretty much look like the east side, except for when, where there is not enough room for them to put poles down out to plant trees, other than that, the east side will, the west side will pretty much look like the, the east sides. And, and I would like to go further to say, not only was, uh, not only what was done to Mobile Street was transformative for that street, it helped to transform the community. It helped the community to feel good about themselves, uh, when they walk out the door and look up and down this beautiful street. It also helped us to transform the community, crime is not the same crime, they're up and on it, uh, crimes down, uh, it just, uh, it's just transformative, and we, and we were determined to complete this process. They told me it would take $30,000, and, uh, I would, I was able to donate the $30,000 to finish this project.
In other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Passes.
Resolutions being introduced, 08287, approved bid award to Gray Bar Electric for street light poles and arms. 08288, approved purchase order to Gray Bar Electric for video components for Central Event Precinct. 08289, approved bids from Fleet Safety for uplifting police vehicles, upfitting, I'm sorry, upfitting police vehicles. 08290, approved bid from Sunbelt Fire for fire bunker gear. 21291, authorized a construction contract with Rogers and Willard to the least premises known as the Buick Building. 37292, approve a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Daquilla Smith, doing business as merry-go-round transportation to operate a shuttle service.
So moved. Second?
Been properly moved and second in the discussions. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Passing unanimously.
Announcements?
Uh, District 1, Mr. Richardson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I want to start off first of all by commending, uh, the captain of the 30 precinct and his officers, along with his citizens of, uh, District 1, uh, for an outstanding job in keeping crime down. I have the police report, and, and this report is not much different from other reports. Uh, I posted one a couple of weeks ago where there was zero crimes, uh, during that period. Well, I got one yesterday, it says robberies, none, auto thefts, none, burglaries, none, commercial burglaries, none, residential burglaries, two. That's, that is the extent of the report, and this is consistent with the 30 precinct. Uh, I mean, it, it's, it's a culmination of things. In District 1, the citizens are not afraid to report what they see. It's a culture in District 1, and I think as, as long as you have the citizens working in conjunction with the police department, this is kind of results we can get all over the city of Mobile, but consistently, this is the kind of report that we, uh, that we get. I also would like to say, uh, that I, I wrote out to see whether or not the citizens of District 1 was honoring the curfew. I was very satisfied. I was very satisfied in what I saw. I hit Dolphin Street at Kennedy Street going west, and I couldn't see a car. The whole street was empty. And I don't know if I've ever seen that. So we may have, I came back down Spring Hill Avenue, there was little or nothing going on. So we may have a few people violating, but by and large, citizens are honoring this. I know in District 1 because I rode over to see what I could find, and I couldn't find anybody. Very few people were moving, and this is what we were trying to accomplish. I believe we are there, and I believe what we did today is very important. That is, if we still have violators that bound and determined to leave home without any important reason, that they would be fined. First time, $100, the second time, $200. And if we have to up that fine, we'll do that. But this is how we are starting off. And we are sending the message that you need to stay home. Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
District 4, Mr. Williams.
Thank you very much. Just like to wish everyone a very happy Easter. And I do agree with the mayor, I think that we'll have more people praying on this holiday. It's the holiest of days and holiest of weeks than we ever had before. And I do believe, not only is it changing our shopping and traveling habits, I hope that it's going to change our habits of being who we should be. And again, I wish everybody a happy birthday, or happy Easter.
District 5, Councilman Joe Days.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I would like to join my colleagues in wishing all of our citizens a joyous Christmas. It's the most important religious holiday in the Christian faith, and it's important that we all observe it. We're not going to be able to go to church this year, but it can still be a wonderful Easter if we take the time. There are multiple opportunities to attend church online. You can attend some of the most marvelous, magnificent Easter services in the world online, and I recommend that to all of our citizens. Again, I'd like to also join my colleagues in thanking all of our first responders and our healthcare professionals in the city of Mobile who are doing a magnificent job under absolutely trying circumstances. It's our job to support them, not only by flashing our lights at the appropriate times, but also by adhering to the rules and regulations that have been issued by the governor and the mayor. Thank you.
District 6, Ms. Besrich.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much. I too would like to wish everybody a very happy Passover that starts tomorrow evening for the first night of Seder. I know that this is normally a time when lots of people gather in their homes or even in their house of worship to have Seder services, and of course, that will not be practical or smart to do this year. So it will be quite unique that we will celebrate our Passover is quite uniquely this year. Can you hear me? You having trouble?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, thank you. I would also like to wish everybody a very happy Easter, which I know this year will be very different as we know it for families, and my heart breaks for everybody celebrating Easter, such a tremendous and very large holiday for Christians throughout our nation and of course, Mobileans. So again, I am glad to see the shelter in place approved by the mayor and put into place, and I'm hoping that our police do not have to go about finding people for this. It's a temporary thing, but it's something that we have to do for each other in order to keep everybody safe. And again, I wish everybody good health and well-being, and thank you.
District 7, Ms. Gina Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Earlier, we approved a form to allow the zigler work to continue. It was just a different form that ALDOT has required of us to enable us to bid this project out. This is, this project has been going on for a very long time, and this was just one more holdup, but thankfully, we have gotten past it. There's already some utility work going on. I say already, it's just more utility work going on on zigler to help prepare the area for this widening. So thankfully, this is another step forward, and we should still be on track for getting work started maybe by sometime this summer. Also, I had initially planned to have a district meeting this spring. It was going to be the end of March, and we had to move it to April, and of course, now there will no longer be a meeting in person. So I'll be sending out a newsletter with some of the information that I had intended to present. Some of that will be about zigler, of course. We always provide information about zigler. And also about the plan for Langen Park. Back in the fall, we had several meetings with citizens about plans for Langen. We got their ideas, we had some wonderful input. And this last week, I had a Zoom meeting with the consultant along with our team from Parks and Rec to look at the plan. It was my first time to see the plan, so we have a steering committee meeting in Zoom planned for tomorrow to show all of the steering committee members the plan and get their input as well. But in my newsletter that I will send out, we will include some of that information about Langen, and it is really exciting to see what the consultant has come up with and to look at the various areas where we can make some improvements. A lot of what we're talking about is where to prioritize these improvements, where do we start, what kind of funding do we have? And that's one of the things that I'll look forward to hearing from our steering committee to get their ideas to go along with what we foresee. We have some sidewalk under construction out in Mobile Terrace. It's on Lincoln Boulevard. This is something that we've been working on for a couple of years, trying to get the sidewalk laid. We started at the park and started going toward Old Shell as far as the money would take us, and we had to get some designers involved because of the complexities of putting sidewalk in an area where there is very little to almost no right-of-way, also some drainage issues in the middle of it. So we finally got that done, and now sidewalk is going down on Lincoln Boulevard. It's been so long in the making that I think everybody forgot about it until they saw our folks out there constructing the sidewalk. So just as a reminder, sidewalk is going down. We've been looking at this now for a couple of years. The goal is to go from Old Shell Road all the way down to McCants Chavers Park. That is the ultimate goal. Hopefully, we will get there this year. If not, we will next year. But that will enable kids and families to walk all the way down Lincoln in safety to get to the park. I think that is actually it. Like everybody else, happy Easter and Passover. Wish we could do it in person, but as the mayor said, I think, given what is going on these days, more prayers are going up than possibly would have been ordinarily. So we just wish everyone a very happy, safe holiday, and we will be remotely, we will be definitely remotely next week, meeting remotely next week, so see you via computer.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. And I'd like to piggyback behind my colleagues. I'd like to thank all the first responders, the police officers and firefighters for doing some great work, you know, throughout our city, especially what we going through right now. And also like to thank the city attorneys and also our council attorney for working so hard to, you know, put our agenda together and make sure that we know what is essential and what's not essential. Also like to thank the mayor and his administration for all their hard work during this time, and especially our city clerk and her staff. This will have been our eighth annual Easter at Hunt this year, which I was planning on having at Tremere Park, but fortunately, this year, we cannot have it, but we are planning on having it on next year. And the reason I had picked out Tremere Park is because we have some newly installed playground equipment out there, and was planning on having a big day out there at Tremere Park, inviting the whole district out to Tremere to enjoy the new playground equipment out there and have a pretty much a family fun, friendly day. But we're just going to postpone that for later on this year, once everything cleared up, and try to get things back to normal. We're going to have that fun day, but next year, we will have our eighth annual Easter at Hunt, if the Lord will. Also, I do encourage people to please keep social distance. Many of our citizens is not taking it seriously. As I traveled throughout the city this past weekend, I saw many social gatherings, many block parties, unfortunately, in our city. And seriously, I want to encourage all citizens to please maintain your distance because this virus is really, is real. Also, I would like to wish every citizen in Mobile and who all hear my voice, a very, very happy Easter. And I believe that we do have our president online, and I think we'd be grateful if our president can conclude our meeting.
Councilman Manz, President Manzi?
Yes. Good afternoon to all of my distinguished colleagues, to the mayor, if he's still present, and certainly to the citizens of District 2. I want you to stay encouraged, to stay in the house, to stay safe, and to stay positive because I do believe that we will make it through this period if we follow the advice and heed the warnings of the experts. Notice I said the experts, the scientists that know what they're talking about as relates to this terrible pandemic. I want to wish all of those who practice Jewish custom a happy Passover. I want to wish everyone else a happy Easter, and we know, though we won't be in our churches, for the most part, the church is in each of us. And we know beyond a shadow of a doubt that He lives, for He lives within each of us. And so I want to let the citizens of District 2 know that though I'm not there in person, I am working for you in District 2. If you have an issue, contact me by cell phone, by Twitter, Facebook, it doesn't matter, I am accessible. I'm not accepting any in-office or face-to-face meetings until this pandemic has come to some kind of a closure. But there are projects of note going on across our district from resurfacing and plateaued and resurfacing downtown to sidewalk repairs over in the campground community. There's work being done across the length and breadth of this district, and I want to salute all of our hardworking first responders, all of our hardworking public service workers who are day in and day out, many times having to negate the social distancing guidelines in order to provide high level of service to our citizens. And so that concludes my announcements. Again, stay safe, use common sense, and follow the advice of the experts. I've asked my mother not to leave the house, and for two weeks, she has not. And if you know you have family members who have underlying chronic illnesses, you need to do your best to keep them at home. Don't go out, go home and sit down until all of this has resolved. So that concludes my announcements, Mr. Vice President.
Any additional announcements? Mr. Richardson?
Just my comments short. I would like for you to check on the sidewalks over on Old Shell Road. It's been more than three years that they've been not doing whatever, I don't know what they're doing, but the funding, the funding is in place. And could you see where we are with that and how soon they can get that done? If it's a hangup, let me know what it is, and I'll see if I can unhang it. Okay?
Any additional announcements? Administration? If not, can I get a motion? Been properly moved in second in the discussion. All in favor? And opposed? Oppose. Just kidding. Meeting is adjourned.
Bye, Bes.